Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Temecula City Council Meeting. Today's October 22nd. Live from downtown Temecula, hi to everybody at home. Bonnie Martland, that was beautiful music. And of course, Susan Miyamoto. Thank you both for being here tonight. Boy, having prelude music just sort of sets the tone particularly nice and soft music like that, doesn't it? Thank you, Susan and Bonnie. I'd like to start our meeting off with an invocation. Is Pastor Antonio Dupree here? Pastor, come on down. And then we're going to, I'm going to ask you to stand for the invocation, and then we're going to go to a flag salute given by Dr. Matt Ron. Please stand.
Dear God, we thank you today for this meeting. We thank you for our city, our leaders of our city. We ask God that you will be with them, that you will guide them. We pray for our leadership of our town and our communities. We pray for those that are putting their lives on the line every day. We pray for our citizens and visitors. We pray for the leadership of our nation, and that this community will be blessed as it has been, and that all things will work together for your benefit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
You're welcome.
Okay, remain standing. Place your right hand over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards.
I am here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Nigard.
The mayor is here. We have two presentations on the agenda today. First one, always good to see Jeremy Goldman of Southern California Edison. Jeremy, come on down and let's talk about wildfire mitigation.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Happy Tuesday. Jeremy Goldman of Southern California Edison. Wanted to just give a brief update on our wildfire mitigation efforts. Know it's been a very talked about topic over the past few weeks throughout the state and probably the country for that matter. So, we're hearing a lot about the new normal these days, year-round fire season. Here in Riverside County, we are not immune to that, you know, over the last few weeks, multiple wildfires. And I just saw there's one up in Duluth as I was walking in here, so. So what are utilities doing about that? We implemented a four-point mitigation strategy, long-standing operational practices, system hardening, bolstering situational awareness capabilities, and also enhancing our operational practices. So last year, the CAL FIRE put together high fire maps of high fire areas throughout the state. Thirty-three percent of the Edison service territory falls into high fire areas. This is a map which outlines the city of Temecula. The red is the highest here. So you can see, you know, nearly every portion of this, of throughout the region, has some sort of high fire area in it. Also, last year Governor Brown signed SB 901, which required all electric utilities, investor-owned like Edison, the municipal ones like Riverside, to submit their wildfire mitigation plans. And it's really based on operational and infrastructure practices. And I will touch on more on each of these on the coming slides. Infrastructure, we're using a different type of pole, hardening our system. We're also using cover conductor in some areas. It has a rubber coating, so the event that a tree might fall into it, it's not going to spark. If you drive out towards Alonga off the 371, you'll see some of this. We just installed some over the last few months. So, take a look if you ever. Also, we're inspecting all of our equipment in high fire areas, sometimes using helicopters. You've probably seen some of the social media buzz on that. I've heard everything from the government looking for legal pool additions, illegal rooms, diseased chickens, you know, our pilots have gotten death threats online, so it's been kind of crazy. I can assure you, it's Edison, we're looking at our equipment. Undergrounding is also something being considered in certain areas. Where and when that'll happen? That's a good question, something that we're still exploring. Also, situational awareness capabilities. We've created a whole situational awareness center at our Emergency Operations Center, where we have folks on standby 24/7, just watching the weather, modeling it. We've installed weather stations on each of these high fire circuits, different cameras. We're just, we have folks at the ready, looking for anything that might arise. Also, we've installed, like I mentioned, cameras in high fire areas. This is up on Santiago Peak, up Orange County-Riverside border. This is actually from the holy fire last summer. And our cameras actually caught the initial sparks, so we're going to call Orange County Fire Authority, let them know what was going on. Also installed weather stations on most of the high fire circuits. Any member of the public can actually go onto that website at the bottom and take a look, measure wind speed, wind gust, temperature, humidity, get real-time data live. Also vegetation management. Probably don't realize, but we inspect close to a million trees a year in our service territory. So, power lines and trees, not a very good mix. You ever see anything that seems like it's out of the ordinary? Please call us, we'll send someone out there to take a look. So this is probably the biggest topic these days, public safety power shut-off. We've heard a lot about this from our friends up at PG&E. The way we implement this is completely different than PG&E does. So you're probably hearing about entire counties and cities that are completely shut down at a time, even before the weather hits. If we ever have to implement this, we try and limit this, the impact as minimal as possible. Our system is segmented, so in the event that there's an area we want to target, we're able to impact that. So, for example, two weeks ago up near CAL State San Bernardino, there was a circuit that we did implement a PSS on, but there were 17 customers impacted. We didn't have to shut down the entire circuit or the entire city, just a small area. Now, is it always going to be like that? No, but that's how we're able to, what distinguishes our system differently. We also have folks on the ground, watching the weather. They have handheld weather stations, just to see if anything changes. So, we're constantly monitoring the weather. If conditions change, we're able to avert this. So, this is a last resort, too. You know, we don't want to do this, but if it's something we feel we have to, we wouldn't implement it. Again, talked about the meteorologists looking at weather, you know, constantly modeling that, you know, the red flag warnings actually this week, Thursday morning into Friday, so there are a number of circuits that we're actively monitoring, none in Temecula. So it's something that we're actually taking note of. Our I.O. Incident Management Team has been activated, and we're, you know, watching everything. So, pretty comprehensive notification system in place for this. We're able to give multiple warnings to our customers that it could be impacted. That's something different as well from our friends up north. We've tried to model our program after SD and GNE, who's been doing this for about 10 years. And finally, the big thing, the biggest takeaway I would give to anyone, not just a customer who's in this area, is to, you know, be prepared for anything. The number of calls I've gotten from folks who are just not prepared for anything, fire, flood, it's just, it's kind of scary. There's been a lot of legislation passed on this as well. Senator Stone was part of SB 167. Take a look at that, providing battery backup systems for medically, medical baseline customers. So that's something that the governor just signed a few weeks ago. So there's a lot going on in this space. We'll see what happens here in the coming days. I know PG&E did say, I think they have another 300,000 or 400,000 customers, they're talking about turning off proactively. Again, that's not how we operate, just, I can assure you, if we ever have to do this anywhere, we try and limit this as much as we can. So, open any questions you might have.
I have one. Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, and then we'll go to Mayor Pro Tim.
Hi, Jeremy.
Hi there.
Is this only on the 500 KV lines?
Distribution lines.
Okay.
So the lower voltage.
Mayor Pro Tim?
You had mentioned the camera caught the initial spark. What caused that spark?
It's a good question.
Don't know?
No, I don't know. Dr. Ron, any, have you heard of?
So does, does something have to contact the line in order to make the spark? Or can it just through wind whipping the line?
It could be anything, you know, palm frond falls into it, some sort of rock, animal hits the equipment, you name it, it probably could happen.
Okay.
I gotta look at the expert here, so.
Right, right.
Anything else?
Just, just a quick one. You know, the, first, appreciate the investment you guys are making into hardening the system and being proactive and all that. And, and also your, the differences in your public safety power shut-off programs compared to other folks in California, it's much appreciated. Can you speak, though, because, you know, I don't think the public really understands that it's just not as easy as turning off and then turning back on the power, right? I mean, there's a lot that goes into being able to turn those lines back on. And I think that's part of the reason why, you know, there's such a long period of outage.
Yeah, absolutely. You just can't flip the switch to turn the power off. There's a whole system in place. You know, if we ever did have to de-energize a line, there's usually periods of warning that we're actually watching the weather, it could be three hours, could be five hours. And, you know, once that weather improves, and we actually have to go out and patrol the line. So for example, up in Mammoth about a month ago, we actually did turn off power to 14,000 customers because there were 88 mile per hour winds, and CHP actually shut down Highway 395 in the area because the winds were so, were, were so out of control. So we actually go, had to go and patrol those areas, make sure we had enough crews in the area to do that, and also make in repairs. So up in the Mammoth Bishop area, we had multiple poles that were down, wired down. So, it's very likely that we, you know, could have caused, that could have caused some sort of a fire. So, yeah, it's a whole ordeal. I mean, it can take a lot of time. Also depends on where the area is. For example, if it ever happened up in Idahwild, you have to probably bring in a helicopter to come in and fly the line, because, you know, there's a lot of areas that we can't get to by foot very quickly, whereas helicopter can do it a lot quicker. It's a, it's a big deal.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Jeremy, always good to see you here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have a second presentation by Shelley Turner of Brady's Christian Hospital, Brady's Children's Hospital. Shelley, are you here?
Well, Shelley's here, but Kristen's speaking.
Okay, great. Good to see you tonight. I had the opportunity of paying you folks a visit, oh, I don't know, about three, four weeks ago, and I was just amazed by what I saw. And I thought that the public and the rest of my colleagues would, would appreciate just how valuable Brady's is to the community.
Thank you. And as you know, I'm here to share that and also to ask for some help, I think you're aware of. So, good evening. I'm Kristen Gist, and I'm Senior Director of Developmental Services at Brady Children's Hospital. And we do have a pretty big presence and services for the children in Southwest Riverside. So I want to share those with you, and also kind of let you know where we need some help. So rough estimates by the Centers for Disease Control is that one in six children, or about 15% of children between 3 and 17, will have one or more developmental disabilities. One in 59 children will have a diagnosis of autism. Sometimes children's needs are more obvious. People can kind of physically see that there's a problem, there's lots of forgiveness there. Children have a clear-cut diagnosis, and so we know where we're going and what to do. There are other children whose needs are not so apparent. Sometimes children have had really traumatic events, and we have to work to learn what's happened to the children. But these events, trauma in early childhood, can have very significant effects on a child's ability to relate to the world around them and to develop. And research has shown it also affects their physical health as they get older. So, given that 90% of a child's brain development is finished by age five, it's really important that we get in there early, when there's so much plasticity, so much opportunity to change their trajectory. So this shows the services that we offer for children here in Southwest Riverside County. Some of the services, a child may just need one. For example, audiology, they come for a hearing test, the hearing test is fine, that's it. Or they may have a hearing loss and need cochlear implants, and they are then treated by audiology and speech. Some children, if they have a sports injury, they're in high school and they have ACL tear and repair, and then they are in physical therapy only. But other children, for example, a child with autism, will see multiple of our therapists. So they may have a full developmental evaluation by a psychologist, then they require speech therapy and occupational therapy, they need to have behavior therapy through the Autism Discovery Institute, they may have seriously picky eating, and so need to see a feeding specialist. And they may, if they're identified early enough, go to Alexis Place, which is part of the Autism Discovery Institute. And that's the program that I wanted to share a little bit more about, because this is an area where we need your help. Alexis Place has 41 slots of, it's a full inclusion program of typically developing children and children on the autistic spectrum. And we could take so many more children with autism if we could fill our typically developing slots, but we're having trouble with that. Typically developing child is a child who's just developing pretty well. Doesn't have to be perfect in any way, but doesn't have a diagnosis, doesn't have severe behavior problems, so that their social interactions can support the social interactions and communication that we're teaching the children on the spectrum. So a classroom has very low ratios, four teachers to 12 children. All teachers have college degrees. And in our toddler class, there will be eight typically developing children, four with autism in the morning and a different four in the afternoon. And we're not full. After a year, we have 13 of our 41 slots filled. I wanted to read a letter. I actually had a video I was going to show you, but I actually have a letter that was recently written by a mom of one of your children in this community, who has already attended for six months and graduated at age three from Alexis Place. So this mom wrote to the staff of the Alexis Place Giraffe Room, which are the toddlers, and she said, "We started noticing Jax's red flags at 16 months old. It feels like yesterday I was Googling signs of autism into the wee hours of the morning, crying and worrying day and night and fearing the unknown. Jax was not responding to his own name, he wouldn't look at things we pointed to, he would never point to things himself, and he had zero functional language, even though he knew his animal sounds like the back of his hand. Jumped forward almost 20 months, my husband and I still have moments of fear of the unknown, although far less frequently. If I cry, it's now only happy tears when watching his progression and his changes. If I Google anything, it's about positive things like joining autism events or new services we could try. And as far as Jax goes, well, I need not tell you what he can do and how far he has come, because you are the reasons we are here. You are the reason he says hi and bye, see you tomorrow, almost without guidance. You are the reasons he not only turns to his name, but makes eye contact and even responds to the request or question with a yes or a no. You're the reason he points, though often with his thumb instead of his index finger, to things when we ask him what he wants. He even uses two, three, and four-word sentences, even if it does mostly revolve around food. And I believe you, his teachers, are the reason that Jax has truly enjoyed Alexis Place and the process of going to school. You each are the reasons my family is at peace with his diagnosis and his future." I had the honor of attending the I Love Temecula State of the City event, where I saw the most amazing videos of how you in this community include adults with disabilities in your businesses. It was just, it was astounding. And I could connect to that, because your children now have the opportunity to be included in that way when they're 18 months old, where the lessons really have a lot to do with kindness and empathy, in addition to just learning colors and letters and numbers and how to climb and ride a bike. And recently, I had somebody visiting, I think it was Supervisor Washington, and we had two children on a bike, where one's in the front and one's in the back. And he made the assumption that the one in the front that was pedaling was the typically developing child, toting the child on the spectrum around, but no, it was the other way around. These children are really fully included, they share each other's birthday parties, their parents are included. And we really want this program to be successful, we just don't know how to get our typically developing kids enrolled.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Pro Tim Stewart?
Yes. Could you talk a little bit about what is it these typically developing kids, what age group? I mean, because I'm not even sure what it is. So is it like a preschool? Is it pre-K? Is it kindergarten? Is it even higher? I mean, what are the?
It's from 18 months to kindergarten. So there's a toddler class and a preschool class. The toddler class goes until three, and the children on the spectrum are funded by inland regional centers, so we're now vendors for inland regional center for those children. The other children play, pay tuition, just as if they were going to Discovery Isle or Kinder Care or ABC Village or any of the other local preschools. Our tuition's very comparable. They're there the whole day, so they pretty much are, almost need to be working parents who want their children in five-day-a-week care. My grandson went to the one in San Diego. We have some of our staff in Marietta that live here in the community, whose children go there as well, our physical therapist's children and our, one of our teachers. And then when they're three, they go into the preschool class. The preschool class is a larger class, ratios are still very low, one to six or one to seven. And there are 15 typically developing children slots. And then there are five children on the spectrum that would attend in the morning and a different five in the afternoon. So it's 20 children and three to four teachers. We have both teachers and autism specialists. Basically, we're not a kindergarten, so they graduate from our school and then go to kindergarten. For Jax, he graduated at three, probably because his particular mental health plan wouldn't fund him from three to five here, and so he went into a school district program. But our children who can stay with us the entire time, very often will go into a typically developing kindergarten. We're working right now on a contract with IEHP, Inland Empire Health Plan, for them to place some of their children there and for us to do comprehensive evaluations for their patients. Any other questions?
Did you have a question, Ms. Edwards?
No, you answered. I wondered if there was a tuition. So why do you think you're not getting any typical students?
I, well, gosh. I can tell you, we've had the program since 1998 in San Diego, and, you know, we're in the middle of a hospital of 5,000 employees. So children get, the typically developing children get on the list when they're pregnant. So here we are, though, we don't have a whole hospital that's supporting us. And so I think we just don't have people thinking about Brady Children's Hospital, Marietta Medical Plaza being a place that would have a preschool. We're doing a lot on social media. I think I just haven't figured out the formula for how to get to the working parents.
Well, I think, I think it is a matter of just education, just getting the word out, because preschools are very valued around here.
They are.
Because we have so many, you know, kids in that age group. So I think it's just a matter of time, and you're doing exactly the right thing, getting out and telling us, because I wasn't aware, but I can tell people now.
Well, and people are watching on TV, maybe they'll think about it.
Millions are watching.
Good. We have a pediatrician whose daughter went there, and she did a video for us. Her name's Dr. Michael Schiffer. She's a pediatrician in Temecula. And so we've got a video, her video on social media saying why your child should go to Alexis Place, so we're hoping that helps, too.
So you were mentioning, anybody else? You were mentioning you needed some help. What are you thinking?
Well, I guess getting the word out. Making sure that people know that they can come to that medical plaza, not just for their pediatric care and their specialty care, but they can come for all those developmental services, and then come there for school, which is kind of shocking. We have a really awesome playground. We found somebody peering over the playground, which means they had to hoist themselves up pretty high, that is not okay. But, you know, people are curious about it, it's just that it's not on the beaten track.
And you've applied for CS funding or, or a funding grant program, haven't you?
We've applied, yes.
That's what I thought. Ms. Edwards?
As a first, when, I was a first-time mother, and I really did wash off the pacifier every time it fell on the ground. I would have loved being able to send my son, you know, two days a week to a preschool in the middle of a hospital. That would have been my dream, because you know, he's going to be taken care of, so.
Yeah, the care is pretty amazing, it really is. And if one of our typically developing children has a need that comes up, because at 18 months you can't know everything, it's kind of nice. One of our little guys, one of the first to enroll, whose mom works in San Diego, so you can imagine she has long days, he can go upstairs and have his speech therapy. In fact, he does. It's pretty convenient.
So, if there's no more questions, quick question. So, you're running the whole plethora of children's needs here at Brady's, not only developmental issues, but regular pediatrics as well, is that correct?
That's right.
And you've partnered with pediatric partners, which I thought was fascinating. So you're, you guys are functioning as a full-scale medical facility, Sans Hospital, correct?
That's right.
Got it.
10 pediatric groups now, and some really special funding from First Five Riverside to provide developmental specialists in those pediatric well-child visits for the two practices that are in Marietta and here in Temecula.
Got it. One quick question. When are we considering CS funding? Is that next meeting, or is that next year? Greg, do you know?
I don't know that it's calendared yet. I know that the subcommittee met recently. It could be in the meeting in November, or it would likely be December.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have anything else you wanted to talk about?
No, but I wouldn't mind leaving some flyers.
Please do. If you give them to the city clerk, she'll make sure we get them.
Okay.
And then my last comment is, you know, we were very successful over the years with getting our, our local hospital, and since then, it's been one of the top-rated hospitals in the country. Brady's in San Diego continues to receive the same leapfrog awards. I think there's just no downside in seeing Brady's explode in this area to benefit all of our children in the region, so.
Well, and I plan to visit Darlene at Temecula Valley Hospital and Brad at Rancho Springs, because there are a lot of working parents there that probably need childcare, and we need to connect with them.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, because I'll just share with my colleagues something that we're working on, and that is, not because of the recent shooting at Costco, but in the, in the past, we have done this, and we need to re-up it. A lot of folks on the, a lot of children on the spectrum, or a lot of children with disabilities, couldn't obey a police officer's lawful command, couldn't obey a firefighter's instruction to do something. Or in the emergency room, oftentimes when somebody comes in with a disability, they're not able to verbalize what they're going through, or it could be very difficult to handle. So there are techniques and training involved that Brady's involved in, that we're partnering with the hospital as well, as well as CAL FIRE, as well as Riverside sheriffs, to give that sort of training, so that that situation doesn't occur. And it's a constant effort, so I appreciate your participation in that.
Yeah, we'll be there. We're looking forward to that meeting, and we have a questionnaire that we're about to launch at the hospital, just to help everybody be better prepared and to help this be a better experience for the children on the spectrum.
Beautiful. Doing great things. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
All righty. Well, before we, let's see here, before we move on to public comments, just quickly, I see a lot of students in the audience. We're always glad to have you here. Where are my golden bears tonight? Golden bears are in the house. Awesome. What about the wolf pack? Anybody repping for the wolf pack? I guess not. We got one over there?
No. Oh, there he is.
Okay. All right, what about pumas? All right, there's some pumas in the house. Now get this, anybody from Marietta School District here? Yes. Okay, all right. That's always cool. You go home.
Ask them why.
Okay, well, okay, anybody want to tell me why you guys are here? Just stand up real quick, anyone. You, young man with the dreads. Yeah, you, okay, go for it. Just real quick, what brings you down to Temecula?
Um, they're going to ask you if you're going to.
All right. He says, "I'm repeating it, because people in the audience..." Oh, you're on. Oh, you're on, man. Here, come down real quick.
Oh, now he's in trouble. Oh. You better hope you don't get pulled over in Marietta.
No, you're, you're good, Ben. You're home. You're home here, so go for it.
I'm home. Okay, so, my name is Matthew McIntosh. I go to Marietta Mesa High School. I was here last time, actually, when the, what's her name, Alice Sullivan?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she cool, man.
Yeah, yeah.
I was here last time, but I couldn't really write anything about it, so I came back. And I love seeing all you beautiful faces here.
Oh, good answer.
So are you speaking for everybody, all your friends here that's more interesting? Would you guys say it's more interesting down here? Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, real quick.[1688.75]
Yeah, it's an honor to be here.
Thanks, my friend. It's an honor to have you. Are you on the basketball team?
I am on the basketball team, yes, sir.
Are you starting?
Yes, I am.
Awesome. Okay, all right. Good to have you.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
It's good to see you, Mr. Mike and Matt, Mr. Mayor.
You're my man. Thank you.
See, that's why I wanted to ask.
All right. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Sir Mayor, we do have public comments.
All right. Do we have a video?
We do.
Let's roll her.
Good evening. My name is Serena from RandCon Real Estate. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, you know, typically, in the past, I would read those rules, but I got tired of reading it, and it's much more interesting to watch other people in the community read it. Can you call the first speaker, please?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Ellen Dietrich, to be followed by Kissma Yu Mohamed.
Ms. Dietrich, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Good to see you, Mary Ann, Mike, and Stu. I wanted to come tonight. My name is Ellen Dietrich, and I'm here on behalf of a new church in Temecula. It's called Citywide Mosaic. It's an assembly of God. They've just been here for about five months, and they're meeting at the Stampede in Oldtown at 10:30. And Citywide Mosaic is a church that is really seeking to find the unchurched. I know there's quite a few, especially young people, of all backgrounds. They want to immerse them in the transformative relationship with Jesus Christ. And so, I just wanted to get the word out. I wanted to invite everyone. But I also wanted to plant a seed, because I just discovered them a few weeks ago. And when I was there, I asked if I could help, you know, break the tables down afterward. And there was just such a camaraderie. And it reminded me of when I first moved to Temecula 20 years ago. And in 1999, I attended the mayor's prayer breakfast. And I believe it was at the Stampede. And so, I don't know if that's something that you still hold. I tried to look on the Internet. I didn't see anything. I just wanted to plant a seed. If you would like to do a mayor's prayer breakfast, I would like to be on the committee. I know how to plan special events. I'd like to host it at Citywide Mosaic at the Stampede for 2020. And so, that's why I'm here. I'm going to leave some of the brochures with the city clerk. And I just wanted to, I know most of you probably already have your own church. We're not looking for that. But I just wanted to invite you to share this, if you work with young people or know of people who want to visit the church, because they're really looking to build a strong community in Oldtown. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome, and thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Kissma Yu Mohamed, followed by our final speaker, Ruth Gray.
Mr. Mohamed, good evening to you, sir. All right. How do you say your first name?
Kissma Yu.
I like it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Mayor Mike, hello, council. I really like your last name. I don't know why, but I really like it. You know, a lot of people in Temecula ask me, like, you know, why did you move to Temecula? Because I am, I am from Somalia, which is East Africa. So, if I'm Somalia, I'm from Somalia, that makes me a Somali-y. I know a lot about wine. I'm like, you know, automatically, right? Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. I only have three minutes. I don't see, where do I, where am I supposed to see the three minutes? I don't, okay, there it is. It's right here, right? I'm supposed to be looking at?
Yeah, and I'll remind you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, council, I'm going to be honest with you guys. I'm really afraid. I'm really afraid. I'm really afraid to go to the movies because of what happened in Araro, Colorado, back in 2012, because of the movie theater shooting. I'm really afraid to go to the bars of what happened in Orlando, then, you know, the shooting bar back in June in 2016. I'm really afraid to go to concerts because of what happened in Las Vegas back in October 2017. I'm really afraid to go to Walmart because of what happened in El Paso, August 3, 2019. A black woman was killed. Her name was Atiana Jefferson in Fort Worth, Texas, by a police officer. And then, a young black man by the name of Botham Jean was killed in his own apartment by a white female officer by the name of Amber Guyer. And her excuse was, she thought it was her apartment. So, I'm really afraid to do anything, to be honest. So, I'm, here's, here's the big question you guys all got to ask yourself. How can we make sure the city of Temecula never ends up in one of those cities in America where there's a massive shooting? How can we make sure we're never on that list, right? So, I have two suggestions. Number one, every business in Temecula has a security whose armed guard. We put that into law. Number two, every business, at the doors, we have detect, metal detectors. Anybody walks in into that business that has a gun will alarm everybody. So, people will get five, 10 seconds ahead time to run, grab their babies, to get out. The fact that I have to say that is really sad. I'm from Somalia, it's a third-world country. I left Africa to come to America because of, I thought it would be safe. And now, all this is happening, which is, which is crazy. You know, I, I thought I had left crime back in Africa to come to live a better country, a first-world country, a Western country. And, you know, it's like, I feel like, I feel like you see one of those commercials, and then it's false advertisement, you don't get what you paid for. That's what I feel like living in America right now, to be honest with you. So, you got, the question you guys got to ask yourself when you look in the mirror tonight is, how can we make sure Temecula never ends up on that list? And also, I was thinking, how about, what if we had Barack Hussein Obama's statue, the first African-American? What if we had a statue of him in Temecula?
Let me interrupt you.
Yes.
Because your time is up.
Yes.
So, make your last statement.
Yes. I would just say, yeah, we should have the, the first African-American president statue, because if there ever a statue, like a Trump statue in a city in America, I would never go to that city. But I would say we should have Obama's statue.
Thank you for speaking tonight.
Yes.
And I think you've begun the process of, by just creating the dialogue of what can we do. So, thank you for coming, Mr. Mohamed.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Do we have another speaker?
Mr. Mayor, our last speaker is Ruth Gray.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that name.
The last speaker is Ruth Gray.
Hi, Ruth. Welcome.
My name is Ruth Gray, and I live in no man's land in between Marietta and Temecula, but my children go to the Temecula School District. And my churches, I go to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Temecula State. Also, I coach TYBL basketball, and my son's first job is a referee for TVSA. So, definitely do a lot in Temecula. And I'm really invested in our community. I recently got a job with the 2020 census. And I just want to reach out to you, because I know you have a lot of connections. I'm sure you already know how important the census is, and how important it is that people be counted, because so much money, federal money, can come to our community if we can do a good job this year with the census, this coming year. And so, I don't need to educate you all on that, but my purpose in coming to talk to you right now is to let you know that there are a lot of jobs available. The majority of the jobs are enumerators, people that need to go out, and they're close to home, and follow up with people that don't reply to their census questionnaires. And we also want to just get the word out that it's safe. People should feel comfortable responding. And just see if there's any suggestions you have of how to get the word out to people that there are jobs available. Specifically, I think newly, well, maybe I should address this to you as well, but people who have recently graduated from high school, looking for work, most of those jobs pay $17 an hour. Or retirees, people that just want to help serve locally in our community. So, if you have any ideas, please reach out to me, and I'm happy to work with you. I know the city of Marietta is coming up with a committee, trying to get different organizations to work together to get the word out. So, that's why I'm here and why I'm addressing you today.
Thank you. What's the criteria to work for the census?
Basically, they just want to encourage everyone who can to apply. They do have a fingerprinting and a background check, but I don't know how strict they are with that, so I just tell people, just go ahead and apply.
Do you have to be 18?
They can fill out the application before they're 18, but they won't be hired until they're 18. And there's no age limit after that.
Okay. So, all you students out there, there's your summer, summer work, or when's the, when's the census work going to start in earnest?
I think in the next few months, they're already starting to hire. They just want to get as many people as they can in their database. So, they have to get a certain number of people in every single housing tract. And so, they're just trying to get the word out, and at parades or job fairs, or, you know, if you have any ideas of places we can go.
So, there's your college student work and, and high school student work for next summer. Madam City Clerk, do you think we can get something up on the website?
Absolutely. And actually, Ms. Gray, we're already working with your colleague, JR, to create a census count committee. So, I have your contact information, and I will reach out to you tomorrow.
Yes, you're probably going to be seeing more people working for the census bothering you, and so I'm sorry about that.
You're not, you're not. And you're actually helping yourself by just being here tonight. This goes out to thousands of people, so, and we play it around and around and around. In fact, Mr. Mohamed, if you want to watch this, it plays at 3:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, 10:00 in the morning, okay?
Lots of people watching, Ben.
Lots of people.
Millions.
All right. Well, thank you, and please reach out to me or anyone else working with the census. We want to get the word out there, get more funding for roads, schools. There's, there's so much out there that, that we can get the more people that respond to the census. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Do we have another speaker?
Mr. Mayor, that was our last speaker.
All right. Great. City Council reports. Mr. Mayor Proctown.
Okay, well, along with Mr. Mohamed's suggestion, we are actually doing an active shooter training seminar at Temecula Valley High School tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. You're supposed to register online, but I've been told we do have a fair amount of seats left. So, if you didn't register, just show up and say, I'm here for it. And I, I want to stress to people, this is not, this is not necessarily about guns, per se. This is, what do you do in case a crazy person shows up in a public place? How do you handle that? And information is power. So, if you understand what you're supposed to be doing, you can actually do it and disarm this individual. He's counting on the fact that you're going to be crazy. You're gonna, you're gonna panic, you're gonna, you know, do something that he can take advantage of. They show you how to basically reverse it back on them. So, it, it's very, it's a very good training. If you've never done it, you should do it, because it will, and like you said, it could happen in Walmart, it could happen at a movie theater, it could happen out in front of City Hall. It could happen anywhere. But you really need to know what to do in those situations. Because you, you, you think you might be able to, but these guys will give you a lot of really, really solid tips and ideas, and give you the confidence, you know, that they don't have control over you. So, I highly recommend anybody who wants to get this training show up tomorrow night at 6:30.
Good work on that, Mayor Proctown Stewart. And you coming here, Mr. Mohamed, very timely. Perhaps you can participate in that, and great dialogue being had.
I'm not here either.
Dr. Ron.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple words about the California League of Cities meeting last week. So, it was another year in Long Beach, cities from around the state all gather. And it's an opportunity for us to really collaborate and listen to one another, share our successes and our model programs, talk about some of the critical legislative updates that occur. And a lot of the focus is on local control. We talk a lot about unfunded state mandates that are passed down to local government. And of course, public safety plays a primary role in that conversation. But it's a great opportunity, and good, good for all the cities to come together and collaborate. So, look forward to seeing that again next year.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. Councilmember Schwank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the California League of Cities. And just a quick note on that, I was at the general session getting ready to leave, and there was a council member from an LA County city that wanted to come down and tour Oldtown. They really heard what we've been doing here, and he goes, wow, I want, I want to come down and check out firsthand what's going on. So, look forward to that tour in the coming future. On a more personal note, we, for the last three years, we've, I have a slide to you, by the way, there we go. We've hosted a Christmas lights bike ride in Harviston. If anyone's been to Harviston in the holidays, it's decorated very well. This is the first year we're going to do a Halloween, Halloween-themed bike ride through the sleepy streets of Harviston. There's some really fun houses there. There's some pirate ship houses where the whole family comes out, and it's like, it's like you're at Disneyland, right? It's, it's going to be a fun night. So, this Saturday, 7:00 PM, we'll meet at the Harviston Community Park. I will be the, the tour guide, so come ride your bikes with us in Oldtown, or Harviston, rather. Thank you.
Sounds great. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Kissma Yu, you have our attention. And I want to say this to you, because I care about you. You have selected one of the safest cities in the United States in which to live. Temecula is always, you know, among the 20 safest cities since we've become a city. Let me share a story with you. When I was a young mother and wife, there was a shooting in San Ysidro at a McDonald's. And from that day on, and that was really the first shooting of that type that I was aware of, and people are nodding their heads, that it just didn't happen. And so, as a young mother, I never walked into a McDonald's after that without thinking, how could I stuff my kids under the seat, or maybe lift up the seat and put them in the seat? I always knew where the door was. So, you know, on a, on a different level, I can empathize with you. But I don't want you to, to spend your life afraid to do anything. You know, the way to defeat terrorism is to live your life as a free American, and be aware of your surroundings, and, and make friends in the city in which you live, and get involved. Because you have the opportunity here in Temecula to make a difference. So, I'm sure that if you feel that way, there are probably other people who feel that way, too. And I think you can make a difference, not by spreading fear, but by reassuring them that in a, in a world that's gone insane at times, in a world where you never know what someone might do, in a world where people are intentionally looking for the element of surprise, where people are unaware, there's nothing we can do to say that Temecula will never have something like that happen. But rest assured, we are doing everything that we can to make sure that it doesn't happen. And the strength that a city has is the relationships among its residents. Communicate with your neighbors, communicate with store owners. You're here talking to us, we're just your neighbors. We just happen to be honored enough to be able to sit up here, but we're just your neighbors. I've lived here 30 years. So, please do not live your life in fear. Be bold about what you're doing, and spread the good news about how safe it is here, and build those relationships that are going to give you a comfort level that you have found your home.
Thank you. And I don't have anything to add to that. Good, good reports this evening. Now's the time for what we call the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There'll be no discussion on these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one is waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of October 8, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands, which is the city's checkbook. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of August 31, 2019. Five, approve financial statements for the fourth quarter ended June 30, 2019. Six, adopt ordinance 19-11, amending section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding prima facie speed limits on certain streets. Second reading. Item number seven, adopt ordinance 19-12, amending the municipal code relating to board and commission appointments and adopt a resolution setting forth the appointment process. This is the second reading. Eight, approve a sponsorship agreement with Temecula Valley Genealogical Society in support of facility use. Nine, adopt a resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual inspection report pursuant to SB 1205. Ten, establish a fee for the use of electric vehicle charging stations on city property. Eleven, approve the agreement for consultant services with David Evans and Associate, Inc. for the Diaz Road Expansion, Public Works 17-25. Twelve, approve the plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the expanded recycled water conservation project, Public Works 17-29. And lastly, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for citywide concrete repairs, Public Works Project 18-07.
Move approval.
That was Councilmember Edwards and seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart. Councilmember Ron.
I have to abstain from item number six.
That abstention will be noted. Madam City Clerk, you got that? And since there's no dialogue on it, you stay on the desk. Please cast your votes. And we're still waiting for somebody.
It looked like it went.
Okay, and that passes 5-0 with the noted abstention. The City Council sits as a few other boards and commissions. So right now, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District Meeting and President Stewart.
All right, welcome to the Temecula Community Service District Meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note we're all here. Are there any public comments? None. All we have today is two items. Item number 14, approve the action minutes of October 8th, 2019. And number 15, approve the financial statement for the fourth quarter ending June 30th, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Edwards and seconded by the mayor. So please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. Director's report.
Yes. Mr. President, before Saturday's Harviston Halloween-themed bike tour, as mentioned by Councilmember Schwank, start your safe and family-friendly Halloween fun this Friday at the annual Halloween carnival. So come on out to Ronald Reagan Sports Park from 5:30 to 8:30 PM for plenty of fun games, tricks, and treats. And then also a quick reminder to join us at the Temecula Valley Museum on Tuesday, November 5th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM as we celebrate 20 years of service to the community. We will have a birthday cake and refreshments and fascinating displays about the museum's historical commitment to old traditions and new opportunities. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The manager's report.
Mr. President, I believe we have one more slide to acknowledge the rededication of Riverton Park. It's happening on November the 6th. We've got a new play structure that we'll be dedicating out there and cutting a ribbon on. So come out and join us next week at 10:00 AM, Riverton Park. And you'll see a brand-new woodland-themed play structure for all to play on.
And I'm going to be going down that tube slide, for sure.
I'll be the catcher at the bottom like I always am. It's not the best job to have.
No. Any director's reports? None seen. I will adjourn the meeting until November.
Okay. I'm going to convene the successor agency to Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam City Clerk, the record should reflect that all agency members are here. Do we have any public comments? Sounds good. So we'll move to the Consent Calendar. Item 16, approve financial statements for the fourth quarter ended June 30th, 2019. Can I have a motion?
Second.
That was Member Edwards, seconded by Member Stewart. Please cast your vote. And that goes 5-0. Do we have an executive director report?
Nothing tonight, sir.
And I don't think my board of directors has anything to report. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Alrighty, let's see. We're now to, we're getting close to the end here, now to the business portion of our meeting. Item 17, adopt the 2019 California Fire Code. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have our county fire marshal, Mr. Sorthalup, to present to us the adoption recommendation for the new fire codes.
Mr. Mayor, counsel? I'm here to try to cover for Elsa as best I can. Our presentation is adoption of the 2019 California Fire Code. Title 24, Part 9, California Fire Code is reviewed, amended, and adopted by the California State Fire Marshal's Office and Building Standards Commission every three years. The city will adopt the California Fire Code as amended by the State Fire Marshal's Office. Local amendments were incorporated to be consistent with previous amendments and code adoptions. That the City Council, our recommendation is that the City Council adopt the resolution with the amendments to the California Fire Code, adopt the ordinance amending the municipal code reflecting the 2019 California Fire Code.
Thank you, Steve. Did you want to go over each amendment one by one?
Uh, no.
Just checking.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of Steve? Okay, do we have any requests to speak? Okay, so we can have a discussion or I can entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Councilmember Edwards. Who seconded that? That was Dr. Ron. Please cast your vote. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
This be an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula adopting by reference the 2019 edition of the California Fire Code based on the 2018 International Fire Code in its entirety, regulating and governing the safeguard of life and property from fire and explosion hazards arising from the storage, handling, and use of hazardous substances, materials, and devices, and from conditions... Sorry, I lost my place there.
That's the first time in 25 years?
Ever.
Yeah, I'm doing it from the computer, so I'm not as good as I should be. From conditions hazardous to life or property in the occupancy of buildings and premises in the city of Temecula, including certain amendments, additions, and deletions, and providing for the issuance of permits and collection of fees. And this is the introduction of the ordinance. And then later on, you'll have a public hearing on this same matter.
Sounds good. Thank you. Please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Item 18, adopt the 2019 California Building Codes. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a very similar staff report, but not on the fireside, on the building side. So before you tonight is an ordinance for the introduction of the 2019 California Building Codes. Adoption of the most current California Building and Fire Codes is important to health, safety, and welfare of the community. Enforced by those local jurisdictions in the state of California, the Building Codes are reviewed, amended, and adopted by the Building Codes Commission on a three-year code adoption cycle, with the last code adoption taking place in 2016. Local jurisdictions are required to adopt the Building Codes by ordinance on the same three-year cycle. The Building Codes included in the ordinance are building, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, administrative, energy, green building standards, historical buildings, existing buildings, residential, and finally referenced standards. The ordinance proposes a few local amendments that are mostly technical in nature. Many of the amendments in the ordinance are substantially the same as the current municipal code. The 2019 California Building Code becomes effective January 1st, 2019. With that, staff is recommending the council introduce and read by title the ordinance as presented. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Luke. Are there any questions?
Nope.
Sounds good. Do we have any requests to speak? So we can move to discussion or a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
That was Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Ron. Please cast your vote.
And I'll read the title.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula adopting by reference the 2019 additions of the California Building Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Electrical Code, California Administrative Code, California Energy Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Historical Building Code, California Existing Building Code, California Residential Code, and California Reference Standards Code, together with certain amendments and deletions and amending Title 15 of the Temecula Municipal Code.
Cast your vote, please. And that passes 5 to 0. Well, folks, we're getting close to the end of our agenda. We're going to move over to commission reports. Mr. Sullivan, what do you got?
Mr. Mayor.
What did I miss? Okay, hold on, hold on. What did I miss?
Number 19.
Did I miss 19? Hold on. Oh, I did. Thank you. And everybody's on top of it. Okay.
I wasn't going to say anything.
No, it's all good, it's all good. Number 19, introduce ordinance amending city park hours and adopt resolution regarding designated parking hours in city parking lots. Let's go with the staff report.
Mr. Mayor, Senior Management Analyst Mike Wooton will provide the staff report on item 19.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As Kevin mentioned, my name is Mike Wooton, Senior Management Analyst for the Community Services Department. And earlier this year, staff was requested by the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Subcommittee to explore ways to increase the safety at our parks and facilities. So I will be providing a presentation on a couple of proposals that we believe will help address the issues. Ensuring the safety of patrons at all of our parks and facilities is the city's highest priority. However, there have been numerous incidents such as drug and alcohol possession, vandalism, overnight parking, fighting, assault, and harassment of city staff and patrons. These incidents not only jeopardize safety, but they're also costly to address. Some of the costs that are a result of these incidents are the increased maintenance costs, excessive labor costs, and decreased productivity, and the costs associated with prosecuting those causing these issues. In response to these incidents, staff was directed to investigate various options for enhancing the security at parks and community service facilities and recommend parking restrictions for these sites. Based on this direction, staff has reviewed current parking restrictions and permitted parking times, especially during unstaffed hours, consulted with the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Subcommittee, law enforcement, and with Temecula Valley High School Administration, including the principal and school resource officer. We've presented to and gained support from the Community Service and Public Traffic Safety Commissions, and we've also obtained direction from the city's attorney's office. Our current park hours are shown here. Passive parks are open from dawn to dusk, which means the times change throughout the year. Community or sports parks with lights are open from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which is an hour past when lights are to be turned off. And the Red Hawk Dog Park is open from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The only sites that currently have existing overnight parking restrictions are the Senior Center and Temecula Valley Museum, where parking is prohibited from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. In order to create consistency, improve enforceability, and decrease unwanted activities, staff recommends changing park hours and prohibiting overnight parking at all parks and community service facilities. In order to do so, the city attorney's office has drafted an amendment to municipal code 1204.190 to change park hours and a resolution to change allowed parking at city parks and community service facilities so that they coincide with operational hours. Staff is recommending that all parks with lighted sports fields be, I'm sorry, without lighted sports fields be open from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM and to restrict parking from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Sports parks with lights would be open from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM with parking restricted from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Then all community service facilities would have parking restricted for all times outside of operational hours. There'd be a few exceptions to this, such as the Red Hawk Dog Park and a portion of the Community Recreation Center, or CRC, and Ronald Reagan Sports Park. Red Hawk Dog Park hours would remain the same as they are now due to staffing required to lock and unlock the gate at that location. The exceptions at Ronald Reagan Sports Park and the CRC are better described on this slide. Staff proposes restricting parking Monday through Friday from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM in the sports park and also the skate park and pump track lots. This was mainly driven by requests from the TVHS principal and resource officer. They've requested that we restrict parking there until 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday, as a way to stop students from parking there for school, which often leads to the issues of fighting, vandalism, harassment of staff, and drug and alcohol use. Weekend hours would then match all other sports parks with lighted fields. Also, as you can see, the aquatics area of the CRC parking lot would be open from 4:00 AM to 10:00 PM due to early morning swim lessons. And the CRC parking lot adjacent to the ball fields would match the hours of all other sports field with lights. I'd also like to point out that the new mandated high school start times will go into effect by 2022, which was just recently announced. However, we believe that by implementing these parking restrictions now, it will condition the students to not park at Ronald Reagan. But we will be prepared to reevaluate that when the start times change. Going forward, staff believes that these adjustments will result in a reduction of the concerning incidents previously mentioned, and we are requesting approval by council to revise the park hours and restrict overnight parking. Pending approval, staff would then place new signage at the parks showing the adjusted hours and parking restrictions. We will also update the city's website and coordinate with TVHS and school district personnel to ensure proper notification is given to their families prior to next semester beginning. And that concludes my presentation. I want to thank you all for your time and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Nice presentation. Any questions? Mr. Ron.
Just a quick one on enforcement, then. How are we going to handle all the enforcement issues?
It gives law enforcement, park rangers, another avenue to actually enforce. Right now, although there are park hours, there are no parking restrictions. So a lot of times, we can have people in parking lots that... We have security that will just come try to clear them out, but there is no backing to that at all. So it just gives us another avenue to enforce any unwanted behavior at all.
Will we be stepping up patrols in those areas in the initial phases of this rollout?
That is a great question. We'll work with law enforcement to see what we can come up with to make sure that it is rolled out properly and enforced to the best of our ability.
Counselman, if I can. I think with the implementation of these new regulations and codes, it'll allow the existing resources and patrols that are there to actually start making an impact. Typically, when we do ask for additional patrols, PD is pretty quick to respond. But again, they don't have enough tools in their toolbox. And I think this will go a long way towards increasing the safety in the response over at the facility.
Okay, do we have any requests to speak? Okay, so we go into council discussion. I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
That was moved by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Schwank. I will tell you, just my comment is a... No, Mike, it's okay, just a comment. You know, when the family all goes to bed, I typically sometimes take my bicycle out. Riding around Temecula at night is quite beautiful and just a whole other view. I often go to Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and you'd be amazed at all the activity that goes on there between 11:00 and 12:30, 1:00 in the morning. The skate park's getting full use and just kind of strange and unusual. There's a whole other clientele that comes out and uses the park illegally, I might add. That leads to graffiti and all kinds of other illicit activities. So with that, please cast your vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And yeah, we have the two actions which were part of the motion. One is the ordinance, one is the resolution. And the ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula Amending Section 12.04.190 of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding City Park Hours."
Thank you. You want to take one vote on both of those?
No, yeah, one vote on both.
Okay, sounds good. Everybody, please cast your vote. And there we go. Ms. Edwards, is your vote in?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That's 5-0. That passes. Okay. I'm going to commission reports right now. Okay, thanks, good, good, good. Okay, got it. I missed it last night. Mr. Sullivan?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Watts?
Real briefly, at our last meeting, you'll be happy to know the Kmart on Inez is going to be remodeled to an at-home store, a home decor store. So that's nice to see. And the commission did appoint a subcommittee to start getting ready for the general plan update, which is probably the most important thing that we do in planning a commission.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Watts. Mr. Willis?
I just have to report that Councilmember Schwank and I had the awesome opportunity to judge the High Hope's costume last Friday night. It is amazing. It is the most fun we have all year long. And other than the fact that they are really mad at us when they don't win. One came up to Councilmember Schwank and gave him an earful. I felt bad, but I walked away. Because I sank to the bottom of the pool and he didn't, so anyway.
What a friend.
Anyway, it was a great time and well-represented. It's just a blast. So it was a really good time. That's all I have, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. We have a public safety report, Cap?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. During the month of September, there were 6,319 files generated, which included 838 traffic citations, 146 parking citations, 136 traffic collisions, 74 DUI investigations, which resulted in 45 DUI arrests, 42 commercial enforcement citations, 45 calls involving panhandling and loitering, and 24 homeless outreach calls. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Assistant City Manager, what do you got for us?
Couple of things, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you and the others for coming out to reopen the roundabout at La Paz and Inez yesterday. All legs are now open on what is now affectionately known as Jack Circle. Mary Ann took credit for that.
Yes, I did.
Just real quick, correct my invitation of folks to join us at Riverton Park. I think I said next week. It's actually two weeks from tomorrow. It is November the 6th at 10:00 AM out at Riverton Park. And then I just wanted to acknowledge we have our new CEO, the Chamber of Commerce, out in the audience today. And you'll note she has deferred not sitting in Alice's chair. So, welcome, Emily.
Yes, welcome, Emily. Is that it?
That's it.
Sounds good. Mr. City Attorney, we had a closed session.
We had a closed session tonight, Mr. Mayor, but we have no reportable actions from the closed session.
Thank you. So, my student friends from Murrieta, it's the end of the meeting. We can hang out, keep the meeting going, or we can go home. What say you guys? By a show of hands, all who want to go, make a motion, my friend. What's the motion? Let's go. So we got a motion from my friends in Murrieta to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Let's go.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are out of here. All right.